Then a bell will ring and the light will turn yellow indicating you have thirty seconds to go. And it's time to wrap up. At two minutes, it will turn red and your time will be up. Now let's go to those who have signed up. First person is Don Schrader, followed by Louis Montoya and Tony Perard.
Prophet Martin Luther King Jr. damned the Vietnam War in his most controversial speech on April 4th, 1967, exactly one year before he was assassinated. King damned the US mass murder of Vietnamese people. King said, quote, "The greatest purveyor of violence in the world today is my own government," unquote. The so-called liberal media, The New York Times, The Washington Post, many newspapers nationwide condemned his strong message of truth. Many whites, many blacks, the White House, even most of King's inner circle of black leaders condemned his strong message of truth. He suffered much hatred, many death threats. Why is that speech far less known, far less honored than his "I Have A Dream" speech? Sadly, most King celebrations today castrate his message. Sadly, most King celebrations do not emphasize his strong stand against nuclear weapons, against the Vietnam War, against the evils of capitalism and the US empire. Martin Luther King Jr. was a prophet, not a politician, not a rock star. He refused to silence and sell out his conscience and convictions to get the popular support of millions and the approval of the powerful.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Louis Montoya, followed by Tony Perard, followed by Jennifer Ott.
Thank you, Council President and members of council. I'm a city employee with almost twenty-six years of service here and I am employed with the planning department as a residential building inspector. I'm here to ask council for some answers and assistance in saving my job. What I would like to know is can the building and safety division place, or the planning department place me on layoff status effective February 1st? I was hired as a residential building inspector nine years ago and I have the highest seniority in our division. I've been informed that I will be placed on layoff status effective February 1st if I don't pass the commercial billing exam. I took the exam as required and I missed a passing score by two questions, but I'm not able to take the test again for another six months. Well, I have a memo which was signed by Chief Administrator Robert Perry approving a proposal to restructure the planning department and the building safety division. As far as I know, this is, was only a proposal. I've never been given anything indicating a final decision was ever finalized on that proposal, just this memo. What I'd like to do is I would like to read a few key points to the proposal to see, for some assistance here. In this proposal, it states, it states that this proposal would remove the residential and commercial inspector designation, leaving only the title of inspector in the given specialty trade. Well, my specialty trade is a residential building inspector. I was hired as a residential building inspector. So, I'm not an attorney, but just changing the name from residential, I would think that it's just my name will now become inspector, not residential inspector. Commercial inspector will no longer be commercial inspector, it would just be residential inspector. If I may, I'd like to continue on.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Okay. So anyway, my question is, is there anything that could be done?
Counselor Harris.
And this isn't really a question, sir, but just a comment for people might be watching on TV as well as yourself is that under our charter, the executive of the city is the mayor and the mayor hires, or the council approves the appointment of the CIO. And the executive branch has a lot of authority over personnel issues. And essentially, Mr. Perry and the mayor and Mr. Reardon here can do a lot in terms of reorganizing what happens within the city and its agencies and classifying people without ever coming to us to ask how we think about it. So even if we told Mr. Perry or passed some resolution asking him to do this or that, he might not have to. And really, it would kind of cross over our goal as, and our function as a legislature to do that kind of thing. So, I guess I'm sort of saying you might be coming to the wrong place. I mean, we, we're happy to hear from you, but really, there's probably not a whole lot we could do even if we wanted to.
Yeah, I guess my only question is, well, I can retire at any time, but the planning department cannot find inspectors right now. They've interviewed three different times and they cannot find anybody certified, they can't find anybody qualified, but they want to get rid of me as an inspector. So that's, I find that kind of hard.
Well, good luck to you, sir. And again, this isn't a question, but I also want to point out that the city councilors under our charter cannot get involved in decisions involving classified employees. So, good luck to you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Mr. Montoya, you do have a grievance process, so if you would follow that, I think that's something that you can do. Thank you. Tony Perard, followed by Jennifer Ott, followed by Tad Nemizki.
Don is that?
Oh, okay. Jennifer Ott, followed by Tad Nemizki. Jennifer gone also? No. Welcome.
Hi. For our start, for those who don't know me, my father is retired Army MP and CIA combat operative. On December 23rd, 2014, I called 911 for help. Armed drug dealers were threatening my life. I had called 911 and two 42 cops for months about these violent men stalking me at my home, giving me death threats for defending APD. The dirty APD cops showed up that day and let all the armed drug dealers go, refusing to search their vehicles for weapons. SWAT came, made me a target, pointing over twenty AR-15s in my face, and I was completely unarmed, as stated in the report. APD stole my phone with complete video as well. Officer Jerry Rouch took a knife, put it to my throat, cutting my keychain off my neck, which is assault with a deadly weapon. Rouch gave SWAT my key. SWAT invaded my home without a search warrant and Detective Dee Garcia made a false report using APD drug dealing confidential informants as the only witnesses against me. Officer Rouch and Officer Cedric Glerre lied repeatedly to get me into their vehicle. They dragged me out of the MDC transport facility, trying to break my arms and my neck and my back. And this is all on camera. They took me up Fifth Street and they raped me. They threatened to kill me, they stuck a gun to my head. And these are the dirty cops of APD. And I do have reports, my judge lowered my bond, okay? It was actually DA who requested lowering my bond, the charges were so ridiculous. And APD sex crimes unit is hiding all of these rapes. I also have a case of a rape that's being covered up by APD sex crimes unit. But I love Chief Eden and I honor APD brass. It's not your fault that there's dirty cops at the lowest levels in the sewers of APD. So, I will be leaving you a copy.
Thank you very much. Tad Nemizki, followed by Christopher Sidio, followed by James Whiskeman. Ma'am?
Yeah, in my boyfriend's APD homicide.
Ma'am, you are out of order.
No, no. The dirty cops, the Alberkirk.
Ma'am, please.
Okay, the blue-on-blue shooting.
We are not, we are not going to listen to your yelling, thank you. Mr. Nemizki.
Thank you. We need Tad Nemizki. A lot, a lot of interesting things going on lately.
Would you close that back door?
Would you reset my time?
It's been reset.
Okay. Okay. As I start saying, you know, a lot of interesting things going, going on lately. Well, here is stakeholders dialogue. Well, I wrote it down. Without, guess who? Well, there's stakes to tango. You know what I mean? So, who is stakeholders, et cetera, et cetera? Well, anyway. Here it now about education. Well, groupah goes to, back to school, interesting. And try to get college, excuse me, high school degree. Never played, I guess, too. Anyway, also, oh, yes, APS, interesting, too. I'm gonna, I don't have time to talk about APS. Everybody right here having, own, have to guard their own nest. I am just fed up about city government, dysfunctional city council. And let's me tell you why, why I'm saying dysfunctional city council. Mayor vetoed, then city council cannot override because in year six, they can't get it. Well, that, that also I found it dictatorship comes from the top. Here is Martin Luther King refused to shut mouth. No, finally, I, I do refuse shut my, my mouth and I will talk. I will stand for the human rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nemizki. Christopher Sidio, James Whiskeman, and Sue Flint.
Good evening, Council President Garduno and city councilors. My name is Chris Sidio. I'd like to first say congratulations to Mr. Ray Garduno for being city council president. When I heard he took over as city council president, I was excited. He has my highest respect and hope it continues. A concern I have and is one of my greatest pet pee is last year, this council voted to put to the voters that the mayor would appoint the police chief and the fire chief. And that it had to be approved by the city council and would also give you the authority to remove with a two-third vote when there was a loss of confidence in them. I know it went to the county commissioners for inclusion in the November 2014 ballot, but it did not make it. What is the status on this now? I believe the district attorney, Carrie Brannen, made the right decision when she charged Keith Sandy and Dominic Perez in the shooting of homeless camper James Boyd. I have not been a big supporter of the DA Carrie Brannenburg and have even protested in front of her office. However, since she changed, since she charged APD officers with murder, all of a sudden, after fourteen years as the district attorney for Albuquerque and in regards to the latest APD fatal shooting, the district attorney's office is not allowed at the scene or at the briefing. It appears once again that APD is beyond all laws, rules, and regulations. It is like a gang that makes its own rules. I won't even mention the blue-on-blue shooting that happened within APD, but after serving twenty-six years in the military, the CO is ultimately responsible. In this case, the chief of police. This is why I am so passionate about getting this article to the voters for a vote, approval and/or removal of the chief of police or fire chief. As far as retention for APD?
Thank you, Mr. Sidio. Thank you. Counselor Benton.
A question for Steph with regard to something that he just brought up. And this council voted to, to put that item on the ballot for the council to have advice and consent and chief and also removal authority. Since that was not placed on the ballot by the county commission, does that automatically go on the next general ballot? Or the next ballot that we, that the city has the legal ability to place it on?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, it does not. The election resolution was specific to the general election in November, but the bill is prepared and ready to go if the council would like to consider it for the municipal election in October of 2015.
Well, I'm asking for that right now.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how Counselor Sanchez feels about co-sponsoring on that.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. Counselor Sanchez.
I definitely will be part of co-sponsoring that legislation.
And I think at this point, we're probably going to have a number of other folks sponsoring that. Thank you. Sue Flint, excuse me. Next one is James Whiskeman and then Sue Flint.
Good evening, city councilors. My name is James Whiskeman. I live in District Two and something people in the neighborhood have been talking about is the tent city that's bringing up along First Street at the end of Stover. And we're just curious whether city council is aware of it and whether the city currently has a plan to manage or direct that as the situation evolves. May I cede my time?
Counselor Benton.
The, I can't remember whether you met with, with the group of property owners that met with me and property owners in the area.
We've met about other issues recently.
So, so the tent city itself is a concern. It is on the radar of the, of the city council and as well as the administration. And I've spoken to them about that. I don't know if they would like to speak to that, but it's a concern and the city has taken, has and continues to take it seriously. There's no silver bullet solution to that situation, as you probably could understand, but certainly, we don't want people preyed upon by criminals, which I'm concerned is going on down there. And, but we're on shaky legal ground to just say that we're going to remove the situation.
Right.
But we are, it has very, very serious attention. As you may know, the area commander just changed, so we're meeting right away with the new area commander and clearly recognize the seriousness of the situation, believe me.
If I may, just for a moment, I, I don't speak for the residents, but I did inform them, well, we'll find out whether the city is aware of it and whether anything is happening. I think generally that what I'm hearing from people is nobody wants to see the police, the police arrest people or people being dealt with more harshly than life and they've already dealt with themselves somewhat. And at the same time, just making sure that twenty-tenths isn't going to become forty, become eighty, become one-hundred-sixty. So, thank you, Counselor Benton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And did the administration want to respond in any way to that?
Mr. Counselor, President, President Garduno, Counselor Benton, we've had some discussions with council and I can assure the constituent that the various entities in the city, to include the police, Safe City Strike Force, family and community, and a couple others, are well aware of the situation and are looking at various options to, to try to ensure that the health, safety, welfare of that particular community is protected against any infiltration criminal activity or other delirious types of activities associated with that, with that tent city.
Thank you, everybody. And I think, just for anyone who's listening, Mr. Perry mentioned family community services. So there are both short-term attention paid from the social service side right now for the people who are down there, but I think anybody who has followed what we've been trying to do with regard to long-term solutions to, to mental illness, substance abuse, PTSD, homelessness, all of the above, there's a serious interest, I think, by, by the leadership of the city and clearly as expressed by the community in the straw vote that was taken at the last election in finding solutions to, to these issues. And, and they are very complex and, and again, my sympathies to you that are having to deal with, with the side effects of what's going on and, but I assure you, we're very, very serious about it.
Mr. Whiskeman, thank you for bringing this up. Thank you, Counselor Benton and CIO. Perry.
I was also impressed with the fact that neither or no one talked about the wholesale removal of folks, but rather finding a solution for the situation. And as you know, some folks were injured by a truck some time back, so we have to think about that, too, that those people are very vulnerable.
Thank you very much. We now go to Sue Flint, followed by Karen Cathy, followed by Cody Rector.
Good evening. My name is Sue Flint. I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer at Sun North Estates, which is in the northwest quadrant of I-25 in Peseo del Norte. I've come the last few times and Counselman Harris, I mean, Winter, you haven't been here. And personally, I don't know you, but as my councilman, I am here and I come a lot of times by myself, as you see. I need to ask you to step down as our councilman because I feel that you're prejudiced when it comes to certain things for APS and you were before you became the interim superintendent. I have a letter here back when you, you guys got the remand back from the district court for the R-1111 for the exclusion of Coronado. There are so many mistakes in this thing and as attorney, Mr. Harris, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Jones is a real estate person, a lot of stuff just shouldn't have been done. You know, ex parte, and I, you know, I just started going into law school and I did it because you encouraged me when you told me I don't understand government or how any of this works. Well, I do understand it. I've been here three years bringing this before you. When you're not supposed to have contact with people like Mr. Bohannon, how do you do a comprehensive plan for the ABQ, for the mayor? And you've got you, Mr. Harris, and you've got you, Trudy Jones, sponsoring these things. I, I don't quite understand it, but you didn't follow a lot of this. And there are criminal acts that were done through this and not one of you have ever asked me what I think about this. I understand the liability because your city council attorney has told you not to talk to me, but this is more than an $8.3 million lawsuit you settled with Albuquerque Commons. You're up for a lot more because you didn't protect 182 homeowners. That's what this is about. This isn't about me. You gave Mr. Bohannon and the Thezmanns their property and their rights, but did not protect ours.
Ms. Flint, thank you very much.
I know, but it's hard to ask your councilman to step down when you get only two minutes.
We've heard you. Thank you, Ms. Flint.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Cathy, followed by, Zeta Rocker is what I have here, is what I believe.
Good evening, councilmen and councilwomen. I come here today to say thank you because I went to the public library today, to the main library, and I got to see the Albuquerque Healthcare for the Homeless in Action. And thank you so much for having a nurse on site. It helps them so much. I don't know if you're aware of the schedule, but on Mondays, they have a therapist. On Tuesdays, they have a nurse. On Wednesdays, they have a client advocate. On Thursdays, a nurse. On Friday, a therapist. And Saturdays, a client advocate again. So, I'm so thankful for that. The homeless need that service and the mentally ill, too. And then I'm very hopeful, too, because I saw at the Albuquerque Comic Convention, I saw that there was people from the CIT there, they're, I guess, the nonprofit or whatever it is, and they were talking about the CIT cards. And I hope that every officer takes those into consideration because it's important. And I hope it's not a card to go and shoot, you know, right away and say, oh my God, that person has schizophrenia or that person has some mental illness. So I'm hoping that officers are truly trained to de-escalate situations with mentally ill. And I would also like to say that I'm hopeful that the proposed new monitor that I saw in the paper wants to work with the community and I'm hoping so much that it, that's what he really wants to do. And then to close off, I saw that the Southeast Area Command Community Policing Council met. I'm hopeful that that is in existence, but I'm also hoping that there is room for public comment. Thank you.
Ms. Cathy, just a second. Counselor Benton.
And I thank you for coming to speak and for pointing out the nurse program. I was going to ask that same question, but it was actually during, during a proclamation and I didn't think it would be appropriate, but, but I want to thank the council people who supported having, getting the nurse into the library. And, you know, on the speaker, a couple speakers back about the tent city, I mean, some of those very people are innocent people that can take advantage of these, of these services, you know, and within walking distance. And so we need to keep that in mind and certainly, you know, the concerns down there are not strictly law enforcement, but there is a dynamic that occurs when people are homeless that other people that aren't necessarily homeless prey upon them. And that's where the criminal issue and the involvement of the police comes in. But, but yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent about CIT training and I think everyone in, in the police department is, is on board with that as far as I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cathy. The last speaker tonight is Cotten, I believe? No? Caden? Rocker, right?
Thank you, Kate.
So, here we go again. I've only spoken in front of the council a couple of times. Forced with my bulletproof cup to protect myself from the lawless coward Officer Sandy and then more recently to help out hand out some awards. I've heard and seen many citizens who have been coming to council about corruption and police brutality for years, begging you, council, to do something, anything. Many of these people have had their loved one unjustly murdered by APD officers. APD officers have been getting away with murder by badge for far too long and it needs to stop now. Yet I have not heard or observed any council member speak up to at least personally apologize to every single individual who has lost a loved one at the hands of APD, as well as others who have had their rights violated in other ways by APD. If you don't think APD has a problem, read the DOJ report, review the evidence of the murder of Mr. James Boyd and watch the video as Officer Sandy and Perez murder Mr. Boyd. Now APD is fighting with the DA and undercover lieutenant that shot at two other undercover officers. Even when APD accidentally shoots someone while climbing through a window, they still manage to shoot the citizen in the back, just like Mr. Boyd and others who have been murdered by APD. Enough is enough. Pardon my language, council, and I'll keep it mild, but what the hell is it going to take before you do something, anything? I've heard councils say there is not much they can do, at least that's what it seems. For starters, you could at least make public record stating that Eden and Perry Berry need to be fired or resign because they are corrupt and incompetent at their job, or you could really take action like the city council in Minneapolis are trying to do by requiring police officers to have their own professional liability insurance, just like health professionals have malpractice insurance. If APD already required APD officers to have insurance, lawless Sandy would never have gotten on. Millions of millions of taxpayers' dollars would not have to be spent because of APD officers who have committed and so far gotten away with murder by badge assaults and others.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We are now under announcements. Counselor Pinia.
The Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Water Utility Authority will meet on Wednesday, January 28th at 5:00 PM in the Vincent Y Grego chambers.
Great. The task force in behavioral health will meet on tomorrow.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you. Today in federal court, the city presented our argument in favor of approval of the settlement agreement negotiated with the Department of Justice relating to its investigation of APD. The court also heard from friends of the court who had filed briefs pursuant to the court's order. Yesterday, we reached a very important milestone.
If APD already required APD officers to have insurance, lawless Sandy would never have gotten on. Millions and millions of taxpayers' dollars would not have to be spent because of APD officers who have committed and so far gotten away with murder by badge assaults and others.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We are now under announcements. Counselor Pinia.
The Albuquerque-Bernilio County Water Utility Authority will meet on Wednesday, January 28th at 5:00 PM in the Vincent Y. Grego Chambers.
Great. The Task Force in Behavioral Health will meet on tomorrow.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you. Today in federal court, the city presented our argument in favor of approval of the settlement agreement negotiated with the Department of Justice relating to its investigation of APD. The court also heard from friends of the court who had filed briefs pursuant to the court's order. Yesterday, we reached a very important milestone. And as a number of you met the people that we introduced, the parties reached the very first significant potential stumbling block in implementation of the settlement agreement. And they passed the test. They passed the test well. The Department of Justice in the city collectively chose to recommend to the court Dr. James Ginger and his team as the proposed monitor for the settlement between the city and the federal government. I have with me here tonight Dr. Ginger and most of the members of his team. Jim, would you come on down and I'd like to introduce you to the council. Dr. Ginger has a proven record of success in his work with other agencies, including the very first consent decree in policing in Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and then with the New Jersey State Police as well. Many of you have now met him and had an opportunity to talk with him. I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Jim Ginger, our proposed monitor for settlement agreement.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ginger.
It's a pleasure to be here. I, I've spoken with several of you. I know Patrick Gallagher and I had a good time yesterday in that process. I think most of you have probably read our proposal, so I won't bore you with that again. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about how the monitoring process might proceed, what it might involve, or any other issues, obviously, that council might have.
To Ginger, any questions from the councillors?
I have a question, and it's a quick one, and we broached the subject when we met. And that is, as you know, some public attention has been brought to the idea of certain parts of the reporting be secret, is what is being said, or not, non-transparent. And it would be kept between the monitor and the court. What do you have to say about that?
Well, my reports are always public record. My reports are vetted through drafts, sometimes with 16, 24 hours of comment that, that come to me and my staff that result in, sometimes result in changes, sometimes result in elucidation, sometimes result in, in other things. But it's a very transparent process. There will be no secrets. Every single piece of that decree will result in a section of public record provided to council and other interest groups, as well as the media. And, you know, I, I understand there's some concern about that, but that is not the way we work. It's not the way the federal judge wants to work, to the best of my knowledge. So I, it's easy for me to say, I don't think you need to worry. But that report is, is about as public as it can get. I think the issue that was, that we're talking about was brought up in, in, in response to issues of public record and, and access of the monitoring team to personnel records, internal affair, internal affairs records, those sorts of things. And we do have access to those, but in the reporting process, as they say, the names are removed to protect the innocent. So when, when the reports come out, there are no names, no information. It is trackable back to a certain given individual. It is a point-by-point response to the outline of the decree and the performance of the agency. And it's, it's explained in detail in those reports, which sometimes run 150 pages, single-spaced. So they're very voluminous, but no secrets. They're, they're open. They're, they're vetted by whoever the city decides and the Justice Department decides should look at those. We listen carefully to any concerns, any issues, and are very, very careful to be responsive to those in the final report that goes to the court. So I, I guess what I have to say is it's a very open process. There are no secrets in it.
Thank you, Dr. Ginger. I just, very quick, I want to make sure that people hear that because I think there was some, people alluded to the fact that there may be some parts of the report that would be, and the word was used, secret. And I want to make sure that you commit to the fact that they will not be secret and that anybody that wants to, either formally through an IPR or just ask the question, that that question would be answered.
I'll certainly answer any questions that are asked, no matter the source. And that's, that's one of the hallmarks of our process. We're very open. And I think it's one of the reasons we get selected in so many places is that that report is public record. It goes to the court. The media has access to it. Obviously, council has access to it. So that, to us, that is not an issue. We've never, we've never encountered it.
Thank you. I believe we have a question from Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quickly, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I had an opportunity to review your resume and your background. I saw the work that was done in Pittsburgh and in New Jersey and ABQ Forward, along with the DOJ, the administration, and hopefully this council will support this, this process moving forward. I think that they made the right choice in selecting your team as a federal monitor. And what I was very pleased to hear, talking to you yesterday, is that you were also going to bring in PhD candidates from the University of New Mexico to work on your team. I think it's vitally important that we bring in local talent to work side by side with you in working with APD and working with your team to make the Albuquerque Police Department the best police department in this country.
Thank you, sir. We're highly committed to that, by the way, because it cuts a couple of different ways. It gives us literally members of the community on our team. It gives us very flexible access to folks who are familiar with the criminal justice system, know how it works, and, and obviously want to make that a career. So I think that's a win-win situation, not only for the monitoring team, but also for the city of Albuquerque.
And also, one more question, or question, Counselor Garduno.
Go ahead.
I was also very pleased to see in the settlement agreement that the staffing was going to be examined and looked at. And I think that's going to be one of the critical components in the reforms of the Albuquerque Police Department is that they have the proper staffing to do their job.
Yes, sir. I think you're exactly right. That's a critical issue.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez. Anyone? Anyone else? I also wanted to thank you and did have the opportunity to speak with you and some of your other team members. And I'm happy to see that you're straightforward. And I think we'll have some answers. And I think the statement was made that APD can become a lighthouse department. And that's what we all want. Both people in rank and file, the upper echelon of APD, the city council, and most certainly, the citizens of this city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We are now on consent agenda. Any councillors have any changes to the consent agenda? Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we pull item A, EC-14224, and item F, EC-15241, from the consent agenda.
It's been moved to second, that those items be removed from the consent agenda. Those in favor say yes. Opposed, no? That passes. Let's go to those items.
Thank you, Mr. President. With regard to EC-14224, this is the development agreement with the Sommel Land Trust. I move a deferral of this withdrawal until February 18th.